Okay, well, let's see. Lord, we thank you for another day here on earth. We're plagued with storms all over the place. Tornadoes everywhere. Hurricanes. Whatever, whatever kind of catastrophic disasters you're throwing at us. This hurricane is coming at us in a bad situation. Probably gonna pound us a lot more than we are. But anyhow, we need to have faith in you and protect us from this kind of catastrophic thing. And let everyone know that you're trying to tell us something, Lord. Be on the right path because times come. And we thank you for everyone. We bless everyone in the town. Thank you for all the participation in the nine-one-one parade. And all the outgoing people that's in town that attended. And in your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I got a little green back here. See, I don't have a lot of green back here. Okay. Now, in session? Where's my hammer? First thing on the agenda is citizens' remarks and complaints. Sign them up. Bill?
Town leaders. I'm here to make a complaint. I've worked real hard here in this town to try to get cleaned up, do my part, even be above and beyond my part. We hauled some dirt up. I did a contract to haul some dirt up here on the hill. It had some bottles, sticks and stuff in it. And the EPA was called on me. Me and my family. I'm tired of it. This is four or five times in the last two years that this has happened. This needs to stop. Somebody needs to do something about it. If they can, if they can call the EPA when I was trying to keep the town clean, I think we should be able to call Colorado and do a background check and see what happened out there. This needs to stop. My family deserves better than this. Need to see the video of the windows that was knocked out. While I was personally, it was aimed personally at me and my son. Neither one of us is twenty to thirty-year-old, white male with black hair. Do I look like I have black hair?
Not a bit.
But this needs to stop. The EPA is gonna be calling on people in this town. They need to go up the end of Fairview Street where there's real, real people to call the EPA on. This needs to stop. I didn't, I've never done a thing to any of these people to do this. This needs to stop. It needs to stop now. Years ago, this would have never happened. The other thing I wanna say is these two policemen's doing a good job. We have policemen. We have traffic control up there for the kids. If they go behind these two guys' back, the sheriff's department, and make a complaint to tell them that you're not doing your job is just not right. This needs to stop. We need to have some investigation on some of this stuff that's going on. Was the building down over here that the pieces fell out of, when it was released to come back, was it a struggling engineer? Did you just get a report on that? That said that the building was all right? Or did they just go out and take their signs down? It's all right. That's something that the town needs to check in on. Just tired of this. I am tired of this. It's got to stop. The concern, this is the same thing years ago that you let Mr. Hall get away with. And he damn near run the town into the ground. Different places on Sunday, or during the work week. They'd ask me, "What's going on in your town over there?" This needs to stop. You got something to say? Say it to the people. Don't go behind your back, call the EPA. I don't know what's the matter with people. That's all I have to say.
Well, I agree with you a hundred percent, Bill. So, anyone else?
Listen, that's all I have to say. I'm not getting into anybody else's argument. This has to stop. If not, next time there's a police deputy or something open, I wanna apply for it. We'll take it back the way it used to be. Sorry.
That's what we need. Okay, moving on. Minutes from the previous meetings. Everyone had a chance to look them over?
I make the motion to accept the minister's rule. What's your comment?
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll accept the minutes from the previous meeting. Okay, next on the agenda is correspondence. Basically, I've been communicating with the Weather Service of West Virginia here the last few days and along with Ernie's been doing it also. We've gotten in excess of forty-eight inches of rain this year due to our normal eighteen to twenty inches. And, you know, we've been up against it all year long trying to keep ditches open and the water flowing into holes and this and that. It's just awfully hard to do, especially on these hill sides. Anyhow, the Weather Service is advising that this hurricane is now moving south. May not be as catastrophic to us as they first intended it to be. And if we would've gotten the rain that the weather was saying that we was gonna get, there would be no more people, I pretty much guarantee. But it didn't move south. Now it's coming up to like four to five inches, pretty much maximum unless the hurricane stalls out again. I don't know if anyone's been following it on, on the radio or not. I just spoke with Gary Howe a little bit ago and the nine-one-one commissioner. And they're the ones that gave me this latest information. All right, then the next thing, we got some other correspondence that's on the agenda under new business down here. So, does anyone else got any correspondence?
Yeah, I've got an email that October 3rd says National Coffee with a Cop Day is dedicated to encourage communication and positive interactions between law enforcement agencies and the public. The day began as part of a National Community Policing Week in 2016 and now continues each year on the first Wednesday in October, furthering efforts nationwide to bridge the gap between the community and the law. Coffee with a cop is community policing at its core. The simple act of having a cup of coffee with community members can be the first step in increasing trust and cooperation between the police and the people they serve. And I'd like to have this on October 3rd this year. And I was wanting to maybe have the cops come down to the library instead of time so the town could come down and talk to them and have a cup of coffee with them.
Do you wish?
Donuts and coffee.
Do you drink coffee? I don't have some hot chocolate marshmallows.
We can do that. So, I was wanting to put that on the agenda. Make sure we can do that on October 3rd.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
Dawn, you got anything? Another thing on the correspondence is the Elk Garden Coal Energy Expo thing. It's not, we're not sure that it's gonna be canceled quite yet or not. It was due for the fifteenth. It was the Energy Expo. And it was to be held outdoors in Elk Garden. And it was gonna be a dedication to the coal miners in the past around Elk Garden and Mineral County. Is that right, Gina?
Yes.
And we're not really sure if it's gonna be held or not yet. But the last count I had from Marion was that they were gonna continue on if possible.
Right. Did you cancel that?
It starts at one o'clock, ain't it? It's on your, on that seven seas flyer. I forget just...
Anyhow, the evening before Friday, there's a reception. Do you know about that?
No, I do not.
Okay. I'm not quite sure what time. It's at the fire hall. It's going to... The town will be serving a typical, a typical meal that a miner would eat. And you know what that is?
Oh, I didn't know about that.
That's beans and bread, cornbread.
Lard sandwiches.
Cherry pies.
And that's why pepperoni rolls were invented, for the coal miners.
But anyhow, I just wanted to bring that up about Elk Garden. They always have a pretty good fling up there. I've been up to about everything they had except the Blue Dress Festival. And I didn't make it to that. They have a pretty good time up there. Okay, moving right along. Officers' reports. Dawn?
Well, I talked to Tim today. He said that the water's straightening up. Doesn't take as much time getting it clean. He said he's got tanks full and he's keeping them full.
Yeah, he does. A directive to try to keep it as full as possible in case the storm waves it up again. We'll have at least a four days, four to five day supply. And, you know, probably more than that one because, you know, you're gonna be able to make, make it slowly. But I think we can keep the town in water pretty much no matter what happens unless the water plant flows away.
I said that one day. They couldn't do it at all. He said that water was like chocolate milk. He said we didn't do anything.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was roughly at a... Ernie and I, well, Ernie was off that afternoon. But I, I was up there pretty much all day and Tim had to stay there until about eight, I think, or something like that. But we finally got the tank up above, not quite to the full mark, but the next day we did. Okay, Ricky, you got anything?
Yeah, most, Ernie does.
Well, see, thanks to Ben, we got ditch one reptile done. We got ditch up behind, up at Groshers granddaughter's done. And tomorrow, I'm gonna have him clean the one up on Washington Street. Try to catch more water and send it to the river instead of down our drains. I did have CI Thornburg in the other day. He had to come back and re-measure for the bulk tanks. I have not heard anything from Univar. If Steve, when Steve sends his prices to me, I will call Univar and ask them over to find their prices. If they're lower, which I know they'll be, I'll have him go ahead and start with the tank setup.
Well...
That'll get, that'll get, get us away from our employees having to load those fifty-five gallon drums around through narrow doorways with a car.
Well, that's gonna be a plus in several different ways. But anyhow, let's keep on couple of that because we need to make that happen. If it's gonna happen with Thornburg, we need to do it before the weather gets foul.
Okay.
And does that gate up there have to be widened or is it...
That part of the fence going back into the plant, trucks can back in there, but it's real narrow and tight. And we might...
All we have to do is move two posts.
Move, move post or that section of it just take out of the way for now.
Well, I don't wanna take it out of the way. We just gotta move them back. Maybe be a couple hours job on each post.
We'll make it happen, sir.
Okay. Suzie?
Well, every week, I've been sending out four to five letters from properties that need attention. For the most part, everybody has responded, took care of the problem. We did have to issue one citation. But other than that, everybody else is, is doing their part. And I'd like to thank everybody that helped with the activities that was on yesterday. Good turnout. More than what I expected would be here.
Well, with the weather, it was good. The preg was good and so was the turnout up to normal. And that's some of the things that we need around here is a little bit more unity instead of trying to divide everybody. Amen. Okay, Paul?
The pool was now officially closed for the season. We had the Kaiser High School party last Friday and had a hundred and eighty kids up from Kaiser High School. Maria Manor sent hot dogs down and the library provided half of them. We fed the kids. They were there from ten-thirty to one-thirty. Everything went good. We shut the pumps down and in the next couple of weeks, we'll get over there and everything went our ass.
Well, Ernie and I's got two more big jobs to do before the weather turns foul. But we'll get to that before, before it starts freezing, unless freezing comes really early. Can't predict this weather.
I'm gonna be going over doing stuff too, so...
Okay, anything else? Gentlemen, how about the police report?
All right. We still have several, still have some more investigations still continuing. But we also did start investigation one day and close it within a few hours. It was a grand arson. Since he came in, a couple hours later, he had his chain back and everything, but the investigation's still ongoing. Of course, we had another narcotics recovered for that month. And for last month, he was also working on getting a tracing software program and helping bay looking people assisting investigation. And we sent a re-screen in that we've already covered earlier. But everything's still going good. Continuing traffic enforcement, washing bus stops, making sure everyone's safe, good to go.
Do you have that program up yet or you're just working on it?
Yes, I actually just got it up just a few hours ago. That was a few weeks worth of headaches.
Right, I know.
You have to do a lot with the FBI and stuff like that. Same program that the ATF and US Marshal use. And I've actually utilized it and it's very successful already.
Great, great.
It's all kind of information that you get. If you can dream of the information, it's in there. I can get tag numbers from just a name. I can click a button. It'll tell me where that vehicle's been sighted off. Red light cams, speed cams, anything that government utilizes. It's really good software.
It's amazing. Okay, moving right on. Unfinished business. On August thirtieth, we had a conference call interview. And we interviewed the three engineers. The tallies came back. And y'all know who we... Y'all know who you voted for and who was the successful bidder. I guess by now it was Dan Engineering. I just need a... I guess I just need a motion to say that we're publicly introducing Dan Engineering as the city engineers now.
I make a motion that after the interview, so we chose Dan Engineering to be our new industrial water, water project.
That's fine, absolutely.
Water and sewer phase three. I'll second it.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll have to give Regenate a call and tell them that also, now that it's official. New business. Forming from hourly to salary rate. We've talked about this for the past six months. And Ernie's willing to go on a salary raise per a forty-hour week. Is that correct, Dave?
Yes.
And it has to come before you all to actually say yes or no for that.
I make a motion that we change Ernie's salary per hourly rate to salary.
I second it.
All in favor?
Yeah, question on that, but...
Well, go ahead.
Would it be fair to give him a forty and maybe instead of giving him a forty-four to...
Well, it's not gonna be really fair, no, but... That's what he wants. So, you know, when it comes to snowing and stuff, we, you know, I discussed this with him that... Well, I guess it was on a, on a forty-five hour week.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I misspoke there, but it was on a forty-five hour week. And, you know, he puts in all of that much any time, all the time, anyhow.
That's why I was wondering. I knew...
At least one thing, we'll know how payroll's coming out. And all of this stuff that's gonna benefit these girls here, a little bit of the store's payroll, not much, but a little bit. And I think Ernie's hurting himself more than he is us.
Well, is there some way that we could just do the forty-four, forty-five, you know what I mean?
Well, once you're on salary, that's your salary, your kids.
Well, that's, yeah, no, that's...
You know, there is a thing of maybe comp time or something like that, but we gotta, we gotta direct that in a different path, so...
Okay, a little more.
All right, so the motion to change Ernie's salary, you know, who's the, who made the motion?
Dawn made the motion and Suzie seconded it.
Okay, everybody in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, the raise for the office staff. This is gonna, this has been something that was promised to these gals. They're both only making minimum wage. The other two that was in here, one was making eleven and one was making fourteen. And I think they deserved the fifty cents per hour that they're asking for. Is that what it was?
Sure. We was only saying twenty-five, but fifty cents better.
Fifty cents across the board here.
Oh, so it'd still be twenty-five each.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm not on it today. But... So, it's actually a twenty-five cent an hour raise, which was, and I barely put them up to minimum wage anyhow. And actually, we promised Phil a raise right before this. She's never gotten it yet. So, I'll make the motion to, or entertain the motion for someone to...
I make a motion if the office staff get a twenty-five cent an hour raise. I second that.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Congratulations, ladies, you, ladies, you, of course, we have to pay this down to next payday. Okay. The next thing was to swearing in to finance commissioner, but unfortunately, he got caught at work today and will not be able to make it here. Next thing on the agenda is to warm the children. Paul, you got something on that?
I'll put it in your...
Yeah, put it in the comments, though. And, you know...
Then they, don't they wanna put that in with our water bills?
The water bill? This is what is gonna go in the water bill.
They just...
Yeah, and they just fill it out, send it in.
They just wanted permission to put their flyer in the water bill again this year, as they did last year.
Okay.
And next, I think it's a flyer up here just explaining. That's all that is.
Well, I guess we'll make, make a motion to...
I make a motion to allow the flyers for the warm the children to go into our water bill. I second that.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, water bills in the water bill. Next thing is, under new business is actually, we've talked about this before, is the Koozie renewal and the Neptune renewal. Both, both of them are on there. The Neptune renewal was up first. And that is a project support thing. It supports the code reader, the Bluetooth belt that they have that has the receiver on it. And we also have Harry coming in to give us some guidance here and there. So, the grand total of the renewal for that a year is one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Is this also, I, I can't tell about this maintenance pricing, but this isn't a warranty, right? It's just a maintenance agreement. And this also helps us out with the software, if there's any...
No, that has nothing to do with the software for the water bills. That, what that does, Neptune's software is where it's downloaded, but then it's automatically imported or exported into the Koozie.
Yeah, but it is, essence, some sort of software that's...
Yeah, that comes from the handheld, yeah.
Right, so it has to be in there to get into the, so it is the software that's in the...
I understand what you're saying now, yeah. Your right.
Is, it's supported by these guys and Harry's helped us out quite a bit over the years. Although this agreement is for a year and it'll be a year probably before we're able to get anything new. But Harry did say that we could update this stuff to be, did you know that, Ernie?
Yes.
So, if we do have this contract, it can be updated to the newer software to support the new meters. If it should come to pass within a year that we do that. So, what are we gonna do about this maintenance report quote? For hardware and software, we'll call it.
You have to have it, right?
Pretty much. Unless you're gonna get in the pit and read all the meters.
I make a motion to accept the Neptune hardware and software maintenance quote. I second it.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Let's take care of that. All right, the next thing on there is the Koozie renewal. Now, we're into, into what Carrie was talking about being in the computer. This is, this is the thing that actually prints the bills after it receives the software from Neptune. Correct? So, we've got a renewal coming up on it also.
It's expired, actually. But they extended it to this meeting because I told them that we had it on the agenda.
Okay, now, this, this is the ones that will answer the questions for you on your end of it.
Daily basis. Almost a daily basis, yes.
Yes, so this is also a renewal.
I make a motion we renew the contract with Koozie also for twelve hundred dollars. I second the motion.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, this is, this should be given till week thirty-one. Now it's up into nine, so it's...
ASAP.
It's ASAP, right. Okay, the next thing is the... Okay, the next thing is, is the Philistine building mural. Being as though we, we put the plywood up and the plywood and stuff that's closing up the Philistine building belongs to the city. Uh, I guess we want to put some sort of advertising murals on there and.
Well, when I was pulling weeds there, I pull them all along the building, you know, if everybody chips in, pulls weeds, it won't be so bad. And I thought, well, Kaiser, I kinda stole the idea from Kaiser, 'cause they had done, they, like, I think they did a contest where somebody designed a mural and they get the kids from the high school or middle school come out and paint it. And we could just leave one section for people to put their advertising, like Legion puts their menus and stuff on there and run a contest for somebody to design a mural for the rest of it, maybe like something with the school, the, you know, the lions, the train, just to design a mural, maybe get some kids to, to paint it. We've got enough plywood all over town, most will make use of it and make it look nice, instead of.
Well, do we need permission from anyone, 'cause that is, it's a state owned building, is that correct?
No, this, no, that's in the state's hands, but the deed is still in the guy from Falls Church, Virginia. So therefore, he's still liable for everything that happens to that building.
Well, actually, he is, but then the state has their hands in it too, right?
They have liens and such on it.
Right. So, are we legally okay to do that?
I can make some phone calls tomorrow and see.
My question is the overhang.
Somebody cleaned all the garbage out from underneath of it and the overhang itself isn't gonna come down, maybe a little bit underneath of there, but I, I'm.
Well, I, I know the overhang is not, 'cause it's steel, but I was more worried about everything else, could we take that out there?
The guy from the bad buildings, um, he's gonna discuss that with us at our next meeting.
And that is when?
That is the.
Twenty eighth?
What is it, Thursday, twenty-seven?
Twenty seven.
Twenty-seven.
This month.
Okay, so, should we, should we go take a vote on this, or should we take this until our next meeting and find out further more about this? Because, uh, it is our plywood and we did board it up according to state rules.
I'd say, you know, as long as we make all the contacts, make sure we can do it, put that in the motion, you know, if we can afford it.
Mr. Tom Citizen, can I ask a question? Is it safe? Is it safe for anybody to be working underneath of it, that's? My son owns the building, but, working on the building beside it, and he says it's strictly not safe. No, I'm just, I'm just bringing this to your attention, so that if we do that, the town does that, is, is it gonna be covered by, the people's working underneath of it, is it gonna be covered by some kind of insurance or just, that's just food for thought?
Then so we'll ask, we'll make sure things cover.
Just food for thought.
Yeah, we need to, we need to look at all the legal issues.
That or sending the bill for the plywood.
Well, you can't even get it, get it response.
He won't even pick up his letters.
Well, I know that, but, soon. 'Cause that would be under trespassing, wouldn't it? We don't know, I mean, we know we put it up just.
We had, we had the, uh.
Just secure, I mean.
We had the, uh, some blessings of the state to board the stuff up that the glass is falling out of and all that because it was recklessly endangered. And we were, we did that and it was state confirmed, so, uh, I don't know, so what, should we table this whole issue or?
Can I say one thought too? If you had plenty of plywood, Suzie, why couldn't you get some of the same size, cut it the same size? Have them paint on it somewhere else?
Right.
And then just replace the ones that are up there.
And have some volunteer, a couple volunteers put it up.
I mean, if he was allowed to put it up. Why wouldn't they allow a painted piece put up and a plain piece put down?
Well, I still think we oughta do, I agree with that, but maybe even a couple of screws and and us guys in town, maybe even work here, can put it up, but nevertheless, I think we better go through proper channels and get this right, so.
I'll check, that was just an idea, I wanted to.
So should we just table this issue?
Just paint the whole day white, paint it all one color, so that way.
I don't want it to look bad.
Yeah, it looks better than what it is.
Well.
If we just paint it one color, you know, just paint the plywood one color and everything's still.
Another thing with this building, we have made a few more advances to possibly getting somewhere with it.
Well, see, we do have an air, a, a, an air sprayer now that we can use to make it a lot easier to paint all that.
Yeah, but I mean, uh, we may be, we may be, uh, getting a little bit closer to getting some resolution either too. There's two different options out there right now, is, uh, they're, they're, uh, gonna wanna check if it's rehab, rehabilitatable. And, uh, that should happen pretty quick and then where it goes from there. I don't know, we've been working on this thing for I don't know how long and to get somebody, to get a building tore down is a at least no acknowledgement, you know, if you had some acknowledgement saying, hey, I wanna do this, I wanna do that, it'd be a different story, but no one even wants to say one way or the other what's happening with it, not even the state. They have the liens on it, but they don't wanna step up to the plate either.
That's probably costly.
Shady Straight from the bad buildings, he said that if somebody was interested in it, there's avenues that they can go because of the liens that through the state. It will take some time, but they can get those dropped. And I spoke to a gentleman this week that goes in and, and redoes buildings and houses and, um, is pretty quick at it. And he was interested in it too.
It might be the same person I'm talking about.
Um, I don't know.
We'll see.
And one other thing before we forget, um, uh, the gentleman was out on Asheville Street. He came into the shop the other day and wanted us to see if we can get somebody to look at the wall behind his house. It's in pretty bad shape, I know we had the engineers up here before for the wall behind the basketball court, but I cannot remember.
Well, that was put in by the Corps of Engineers during the, uh, Depression. That was part of the work program, I think, uh.
During the Depression?
Yeah, that, that was all put in, so that's all government.
So you made any contact with Corps of Engineers?
That was, yeah, that's who I was.
Texas Farm Protector.
Yeah, I mean, the, the whole area's in bad shape, it is, but like I said, that was put in during the Depression, that was part of that work, work program that they did. So, that is not ours really, that's, this, probably the state's.
Upper, Upper Potomac River Commission should be talking to that.
Yeah, that's probably the idea.
Well, Ben, Ben and I met with two of the guys from Army Corps of Engineers this spring and we talked to them a little bit about it. And the impression I got, uh, they weren't really interested in talking about it.
No, but the one guy did call me back and, and, uh, and said that it was on their docket for their five year plan. Or, or gonna put it on their docket for their five year plan.
Well, I knew we need to do something, 'cause I came into town last Sunday, I grew up church and, uh, as I come around the turn, I usually ride to New York. Well, some of that line is street, my cross that, I have a board with the church parking lot there, and I got three young kids about the age of ten, I'd say the eight to ten maybe, playing right there at the river, I mean, right there, one of them was slipped, we'd lost three kids in this town, that's how bad the river was.
I agree with that.
I mean, I don't, I run them off of there, I know if I see the kids again, and then I put, I hope I put the fear of God into them, okay, I really did. Because like I said, you know, we had somebody from this town grounded in that river many years back. And it won't be, you know, it's over, not the first time, we had one around yesterday, the other day, and I pulled it out to him, I said, we got trees, we got, you wouldn't believe the stuff that's went down that river. And like I said, I mean, it was actually right in the water, all we would've took was one slip and we'd have lost three kids.
Well, that parenting comes into play a lot.
Right, well, I didn't know if we could maybe get some kind of grant to maybe put some kind of fencing up around that or get with the Upper Potomac Water Company to try and do something of that nature.
We've already went through these channels. And they're not done yet, but so far, it's been negative.
Yeah, I remember they wanted to put a fence up for a basketball court and we couldn't because it was.
Okay, that'll conclude for our junk. Next meeting, September twenty-sixth. And hopefully we can have, uh, uh, people from down in here to, uh, talk to us a bit and let everyone know about their qualifications and background.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? Okay, we will now adjourn.